We're live.
We're live. All right, good evening, everyone. This is the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Nashua. My name is Jay McCarra. I am chair. And with me this evening, starting on my right, is Josh Neely, vice chair. Then we have J.B. Boucher, member and soon-to-be former clerk, technically. Steve Leinell, member. Robert Shaw, member. And Joseph Patry, who is an alternate. Because we have a full complement of five members this evening, all of the members will be voting. Mr. Patry, as an alternate, will only vote if one of the members has to recuse himself. Otherwise, but he may fully participate in all of our discussions. So before I dive in a little, any further, oh, and I should say, to my left is Carter Falk, deputy planning manager. And if I may ask, Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, there are not.
So just to dive a little bit into the process, tonight, we have three requests for special exceptions, and we have one request for special exception and variance. A special exception is a request to, for use that is actually allowed under the zoning ordinance when certain conditions are met. A variance is a request to deviate from the ordinance. And in order to grant a variance, there are five criteria that have to be met. The request, the board has to find that the request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It has to find that substantial justice will be done. It has to find that there's no diminution of surrounding properties. And I am missing, I think I am missing spirit of the ordinance or public interest, I'm sorry. Public interest has to be met. And it has to find that failure to grant the variance request would result in hardship to the owner based on special conditions of property. So the way we perceive is each applicant will be asked to come forward after I read the case into the record and state your case. And you will have up to 15 minutes to present your case. You don't need to use the whole 15 minutes if you don't feel that you need it. And the board may ask questions of you during that time. Afterwards, anybody who wants to speak in favor of the application has up to five minutes to speak. And then following that, anybody who has questions, concerns, or opposition may come up. And also, each of them will have five minutes each to speak. I'm not seeing a whole lot of people here tonight, so I don't know that we'll have a whole lot of comment. But if there is anybody who comes forward with questions, concerns, or opposition, the applicant can return to the podium and has up to five minutes for a rebuttal. After that, we do allow those in opposition to also select one person to come forward and address the board once again. Once, after a case is presented, we close the public hearing, and then the board deliberates and reaches its, usually reaches its decision that evening. That decision could be to continue a case. I think that's probably not likely this evening. So if all of that makes sense, I'm going to dive into it, starting off with a roll call of the members. Mr. Neely.
Present.
Mr. Boucher.
Present.
Mr. Leinell.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Present.
Mr. Patry.
Present.
Unless there's anything else I missed, I'm going to go ahead and read the first case into the record. So the first case is Kimberly Lewis, owner and Kimberly A. Lewis applicant of 11 Burgess Street, requesting a special exception in accordance with Land Use Code Section 190-32 to allow accessory dwelling unit by constructing a one-story, 315-square-foot attached addition on the left side of the existing home. That's in the RA zone in Ward 2. So would the applicant like to come forward and address the board? Just come up to the mic. You can adjust the level if you need it, but if you could, just make sure to speak into the mic and just, if you could, just start off by, for the record, giving us your name and your address.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Kimberly Lewis. My address is 11 Burgess Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. I'm here tonight requesting to add an in-law addition to my home. The addition will be 315 square feet. It will be built as an extension of my already finished basement, and we will remodel the basement. The total project is 700, less than 700 square feet. It will be an in-law for my elderly parents. They currently own a large two-family home in Lowell, Mass. that has become too much for them to handle. My mother has had a lot of health problems over the last few years and requires a lot of help and attention. It's too much for my father to handle on his own, as he is also almost 80 years old. I am currently traveling to their house several times a week to organize my mother's many medications, help with meals, accompany them to appointments, and many other household chores. I would feel much safer with them in the same house with me, but still allowing them their own space. The addition will not change the look of my home, as it is built off the back of my house, and it should not affect the neighbors at all. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions? Did you have, did you see a copy of the special conditions?
I think, yes.
You did, so you agree with all of those?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you can take a seat. So is there anybody in the audience with, who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Sir, if you would mind just stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Kolar. I am the architect of record for this project. I live at 524 Westford Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. Obviously, I'm in favor of the project, but I'm also here basically just in a support capacity. So if you have additional questions that need a professional's eye, I'm here to assist.
Very good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Very good. Is there anybody in the audience with any questions, concerns, or opposition? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and open up deliberations of the board. Fox, Mr. Patry. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Neely, go ahead.
Well, go around. Go around.
We can go around or...
I'll lead off.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm in favor of this application. This is a relatively straightforward ADU application. The unit's actually relatively small, 300-plus square feet. You know, the ADU affidavit has been signed. Quite frankly, I think most folks won't even notice it back there. It is a fenced-in yard. So I do think it's out of the way. There seems to be enough parking in the driveway if they need to add one or two cars. And once again, this is going to allow a family to age in place. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of this application.
Any other thoughts? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Kimberly Lewis, owner and applicant, 11 Burgess Street, Sheet 59, Lot 93, requesting special exception in accordance with Land Use Code Section 190-32 to allow an accessory dwelling unit by constructing a one-story, 315-square-foot attached addition on the left side of the existing home. This is in the RA zone, Ward 2. And please wait a moment while I get out the right sheet, because I got the wrong one. Here we are. The board finds that the requested use is listed as a special exception in the use matrix and is permitted, permitted as a special exception. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We have no testimony that it would do any of those things. The board believes that it will not overload any public water discharge or sewer system, drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. All special regulations for the use have been approved, admitted to by the applicant. And the requested use will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the district or neighborhood, nor detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of residents in the city. So I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Mr. Shaw.
Actually, Mr. Boucher's hand went up first.
Which one? Whoever got it? All those in favor? Request is passed, 5-0. Just know, though, if you weren't advised previously, there is a 38-day window of appeal. I think it's highly unlikely you are able to move ahead and proceed with your case. But just keep that in mind that you can do so with your own best.
We'll hear a question. That 30 days until period, can the building permit be submitted within the 30 days, or does it have to wait till after the 30 days is proposed?
You can apply for the permit.
Yeah, you can apply.
Right.
Very much. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Urge you to do so. It'll save you some time later before we start getting busy.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, so we're now going to open the second case. This is Vincent, application of Vincent and Kelly Pesci, revocable trust, the owners, Linda Bradshaw, applicant, 16 Cameron Drive, requesting a special exception in accordance with Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, 3, and Section 190-32 to allow an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor of an attached garage. And secondly, a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32B1 to exceed the maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet being allowed, 875 square feet proposed. This is in the R18 zone and is in Ward 8. Is the applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Linda Bradshaw, and I'm the applicant for this. This is my daughter, Kelly Pesci. So I'm requesting to build an ADU over the garage of their home. It is a three-car garage. It is a 25-by-35-foot garage. So the first application is to submit for that. Looking to sell my condo, looking to hopefully retire one of these days, get rid of a mortgage, also help with childcare. My father is also right around the corner at Langdon Place. He's 91 years old, so I'm often there, often taking him to appointments as well. I do work full-time right now and looking to, hopefully in a year and a half, retire full-time. And then the exception to the variance would be to, for the additional square footage to just match the size of the three-car garage, as opposed to try to bring it in a foot on either side. We do have some preliminary plans. We have talked to a builder, you know. So I think it's, everything is in order to build it and have it match with all of the housing on Cameron Drive and the surrounding areas. They're rather large, so it's not going to stand out from any other neighbor. So that's it in a nutshell.
Does anybody have any questions? And actually, you also had a chance to look at the special conditions.
I did, yes.
Okay. You can take a seat.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody want to speak in favor of the application?
Hello, thank you for your time. I'm Kelly Pesci. My husband and I own the home that we're proposing for my mom. She is humble, but my parents are divorced. She is single, takes care of herself. Unfortunately, the '08 crash impacted her greatly. She was laid off for a period of time, had to rely on her 401K. So I do have concerns that if we can't do this, that her ability to retire pretty much ever, or in the near-term future, would be greatly impacted. So I'm an attorney in downtown Boston. My husband and I also own TJ's Deli on Northeastern Boulevard, so our home is very close to our business. We have no intention of ever moving. We also have a one-year-old and a three-year-old that she helps us with quite a bit, because we work a lot. So I'm very blessed to be in a position to offer this to my mom, but I do think that it just, in terms of, I think you mentioned a hardship to the homeowner, but perhaps more to the applicant as well, but for the ability to do this. I don't think retirement would be a viable option anytime soon. So that really is the basis for this. She's only 63 years young, so I hope that this would be a nice 20-year, 30-year plan that, you know, she can travel, enjoy retirement, and help me with my children. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'm guessing not, but is there anybody else here who wants to speak in favor of the application? Anybody want to speak with any questions, concerns, or opposition? If not, then we're going to close the public hearing and open deliberations of the board. Thoughts?
I'm in favor of this application. So a couple of things. On the special exception for the, for the accessory dwelling unit on the second floor, again, I think that it's, it's not unique space, but it is a space that is sometimes used for additions. Whether or not it's an ADU or not, it's not an uncommon place to put extra space in a home. Second thing is, in that neighborhood, I noticed driving around that there are a lot of large garages with finished space above it. So this would not be out of character at all with the neighborhood. And as far as the variance for the extra 125 square feet, I don't think there's any, there is no reason to not, to take away or to deny an extra 125 square feet. Again, it's not like they're building the extra space over and beyond what's actually there. I think there's already a three-car garage there. Obviously, it's, you know, a larger garage than, you know, some, most homes, I guess, but in that area, that's a common, I see a lot of three-car garages. So I think that extra 125 square feet would not be a detriment to any, anything going on in the neighborhood, or I don't think anybody would really notice that. And looking at the plans that they propose, it just gives you a really good idea that it just looks like just an addition over a garage, and no one will really know that there was an ADU there. So for those reasons, I would be in favor of the application.
Mr. Leinell.
Really, Mr. Boucher gave the same reasons that I'm also in support, so I'm not going to say anything more.
Anybody else want to speak to it? I think I would just add that it really is probably a not-to-exceed, because there's every chance that, just kind of given, looking at the design, it may wind up being actually slightly smaller. I would agree. So I think the way we want to approach this is, well, I should just quickly ask, anybody else want to comment? I think we should, we should approach it is to first act on the variance request, and then if that's granted, move to the special exception. Anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
I'll take a stab at it. Been a while.
You'll see how rusty you are.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Vincent and Kelly Pesci. Sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly. Revocable trust owner, Linda Bradshaw, applicant, 16 Cameron Drive, Sheet B, Lot 267, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-32, Section B, Subsection 1, to exceed maximum size of accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet allowed, 875 square feet proposed. It's in our 18 zone, Ward 8. We find that the granting of the variance would, would not be contrary to public interests. Again, because the garage already exists, it is a three-car garage, which is common in that neighborhood, and having an addition over a garage, again, is a common type of an addition to any home. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because again, the, the addition, again, could be, could be anything other than an ADU. So again, I'm, it's a, it's a, it would be seamless for that addition to be placed in that neighborhood. Granting the variance would, would do substantial justice, again, because we're allowing the homeowner to expand on that garage, which is normal and customary. The values of surrounding properties would not be diminished. We don't have any testimony that it would or wouldn't, but, but we're making the opinion that it would not be diminished. Unnecessary hardship, okay, so owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the null of variance would result in unnecessary hardship. There is, the proposed use, again, can you help me out a little bit? Sections 1 and 2, is it either/or or both?
Yeah, it's either/or.
It's either/or. So I will state that the proposed use is a reasonable one, again, because it allows the homeowner to expand on, on garages already existing. And with that, I make a motion to approve the variance.
Second.
Mr. Leinell, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor? Do you also want to take a stab at the special exception?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the special exception for Vincent and Kelly Pesci, revocable trust owner, Linda Bradshaw, applicant, 16 Cameron Drive, Sheet B, Lot 267, requesting a special exception in accordance with, with Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 3, and Section 190-32 to allow an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor of an attached garage. We find that the requested use is listed in the special exception use matrix as defined as 190-15, Table 15-1, and 190-32, Section B, Subsection 1, and is permitted as a special exception by, by, and is permitted. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Again, this is just an ADU addition, one extra person living there. There's no testimony, there's no comments on, on this causing any traffic congestion. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system, or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use, or any developed use in the immediate area, or in any other area of the city, will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare. Again, an existing home, we're not adding any infrastructure. Any special regulations for the use is fulfilled. And then the requested use will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. Again, this home with that addition is normal to this neighborhood. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Good for second. Mr. Leinell. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. She passes, that's a 5-0. Once again, you heard previously, there is the 38-day window of appeal. Go back to the third case. So the next case is the application of Stephen P. Colombe, owner, City of Nashua, Division of Public Works, the applicant, 3 Spalding Street, requesting a special exception in accordance with Land Use Code Section 190-115 to allow the discontinuance and relocation of a municipal drainage system within the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook. That's in the RV zone, in Ward 7. Does the applicant want to approach, speak to the case?
Good evening. Earl Blatchford from Hayner Swanson. And we're working with the City Division of Public Works on this drainage repair improvement project on Swart Street, and it most, I'm sorry, Spalding.
We're doing a Swart 2, though.
Swart Terrace. I apologize, this is going to stop, because I have a project at 3 Swart Street, which is just gone through the planning board, and I've made this mistaken emails two or three times. Anyway, so, so the project is, the drainage system is, was built circa 1890, at least portions of it, and the specific portion that we're sort of here to talk to you about. And so we're working with Division of Public Works on drainage system improvements in, in Spalding Street, and also involves a cross-country pipe through 3 Swart Street. So I'm here representing both the landowner and the city as the applicant. The, there has been investigation into the pipe. There's apparent failure of this pipe, which goes from Swart Street down through the 3 Swart, excuse me, Spalding Street property, and discharges, has an outfall at, at the brook. So the, of course, there's a 75-foot buffer associated with the brook, and there's also a 250-foot shoreland buffer associated with it. So a lot of the work we're doing is within that shoreland buffer, some of it's within the 75-foot Nashua Prime Wetland Buffer. So we're not sure why, it's sort of, the reasons are lost in history. The house at 3 Spalding Street was built circa 1940, and for reasons unknown and lost to history, the north end of the house was built over this 15-inch and 18-inch drain line, which runs down to Salmon Brook. So there was, the homeowner notified the city that there is apparently some settling in his yard area, there's a patio back there, and yard area, there's apparent settling that's going on. The city did some investigation, video the pipe, and there is root intrusion into the pipe, and it's basically in failure. So the city's taking the long view, doesn't want to kind of do a inexpensive, or a less expensive fix on this, and, and leave it to somebody else. They want to relocate entirely around the house, and to a new discharge point at Salmon Brook, about 50 feet downstream. So we presented this to the Conservation Commission in December and January, and they, they approved the work. And we also submitted a shoreland permit to, in February, and we'll receive that on February 20th. So hopefully I have copies of both those in your files. And we do have a wetland permit for basically, kind of the, right at the bank of the brook, there's a head wall and some riprap. And so we have a wetland permit pending, a minor wetland permit pending for that. So basically, very quickly, you know, the use listed table doesn't really apply here, even though the 3 Spalding Street property does conform with the use table, but it sort of is non-applicable to this application. There'll be no permanent, really no impacts to traffic, other than necessary detouring or lane closure for the actual construction work in Spalding Street. That's really the only disruption. Otherwise, this doesn't generate any traffic. Also, as far as public utilities, there's no demand on public utilities, and of course, this project enhances the municipal drainage system, so that's a positive. It conforms with any other special regulations, and it doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. And in fact, the improvements to the drainage system provides an enhancement, basically, for the immediate residents, but has no, it won't change. All of the paving areas and grass areas that are going to be disturbed by the construction are going to be repaired, and no increases to the width of the street or what have you. So that's kind of the overview. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Leinell.
Yeah, so I see in the application, you say that there's potentially some, could be some settling to the actual corner of the house if this were to continue unrepaired.
That's the, that's the fear. There's no way to know for certain.
Right, I understand.
But there's, there's certainly a potential.
What is, what work is the city going to do to prevent further settling that could possibly damage that house?
The, that portion of the pipe is going to be plugged at the brook, and it's going to be filled with a flowable fill. So there will be no more voids in that pipe, and it'll be, so, you know, the, the potential for that pipe collapsing in the future or whatnot will be eliminated.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Yep. That does it.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Shaw?
A couple of follow-ups. So, I take it there was no, no guidance or requirements from the Conservation Commission regarding this work?
They had no, there were no stipulations with their approval.
Okay. And I think you alluded to it, but I just wanna make sure that we have, you know, there are the nine special criteria about working in the wetland buffer. And I think what your testimony indicated is that none of these criteria are at issue and all are being met. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I did have just a couple of questions. It looks like almost all the work that's proposed is temporary disturbance. There's just one small area that I do know that says it's an area of permanent impact. Could you just speak to that?
That is...
Tiny little area.
Yeah. It's basically, there's fourteen linear feet of the bank that we're working in. So, that area is really where that riprap and headwall is going. Everything else is pipe, the pipe and structures are being put in, and the, whether it's pavement or lawn area, of course, there's a kind of a backyard, a lower backyard area that we're going through, then we're going up a slope to the front yard area, and then we cut over to, through the driveway at three Spalding Street, out to the street itself. So, it's really, yeah, that's, that's really all there is, is that immediately at the bank of Salmon Brook. So...
Sounds like an impervious area. And just secondly, I noticed that there is a sewer easement. Is there a drainage easement? I know that's going tangentially related.
We are, we are creating one to go with this alignment. There isn't one that we have been able to find with the existing line. Of course, again, it's a very old line. But yeah, there's a sewer easement, there's a pump station that's also on the three Spalding Street property, municipal sewer pump station. And there are four mains that go through the property as well, and under the brook, and towards Fife Field Street. So, but we are, our office is gonna be creating a, an easement plan that will coincide with this design.
Thank you. And anybody wanting to speak in support of this application? I'm looking at the only other person in the audience.
I don't mean to say anything else.
He definitely, he definitely supports it, though.
All right. Unless there's any other questions from the board, we're gonna close the public hearing and open up the board's deliberation. Thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
I think this is a very interesting and kind of strange and complicated issue, but it sounds like the best thing that can be done is what's being pursued right now. And so, I think the necessity to do this work is significant, and it just makes a lot of sense. So, I'm very much in support.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just add that I agree, and I think it's clearly a benefit to the city, it's a benefit to the property owner, and it's good to see that, you know, this is moving forward.
Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Stephen P. Colome, owner, City of Nashua, Division of Public Works, applicant, three Spalding Street, sheet seven, lot fifty-two, requesting a special exception in accordance with Land Use Code Section one ninety dash one-one-five, to allow the discontinuance and relocation of a municipal drainage system within the seventy-five foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook. This is located in the RV zone in Ward seven. The requested use is listed as a special exception in the use matrix, and it is permitted as a special exception by another provision of this chapter. The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The applicant did testify that this is a relatively quieter street, and the final project will have no effect on traffic congestion, just during the actual traffic. There may be some flaggers there to move some folks around, but the impact will be minimal. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, and general welfare. On the contrary, what we do find is that this is a critical safety project for a piece of the drainage system that's from eighteen ninety that has failed after one thirty-five years. It is critical to the welfare of the city that this is taken care of. In addition, we find that potentially there could be some damage to the house located at three Spalding Street due to settling and failure of these piping systems. Any special regulations for the use set forth in this article are fulfilled. These folks have signed the affidavit and have received the authorization from both the Nashua Conservation Commission, and I believe this at New Hampshire DES. The requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it's located, nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. As discussed before, this is a critical project to bring up to code some drainage in that area. If it's not addressed, we'll have some damaged buildings as well as potential drainage issues, which will affect the whole neighborhood. So, for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Do we have a second? Mr. Shaw? Anybody want to speak to the motion? Questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Well, you're not sticking around for the next one? All right. The next case is the application of Randall and Denise Ellis, the owners, Matthew Franz, PE, City of Nashua, Senior Staff Engineer, the applicant, twelve Meadowbrook Drive, requesting a special exception from Land Use Code one ninety dash one fifteen, to allow the repair, replacement, and upsizing of municipal drainage system within the seventy-five foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook. That is in the R-nine zone in Ward nine. And I am guessing you are the applicant.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Franz of TPW, eight forty-eight West Hall Street, here to speak on behalf of the twelve Meadowbrook Project. As Mr. McQuire stated, it's a replacement of an existing drainage system. There's an existing drain outlet to the Salmon Brook located at twelve Meadowbrook that is engulfed by roots and mud and has been taken over by the landscape. So, we're proposing to replace that outlet with a higher outlet, a larger pipe, with a higher, higher outlet comes up about a foot in elevation, replace that pipe out to the street, and also extend drainage up Meadowbrook Drive closer to Harris Road to take care of some puddling issues in Meadowbrook. This pipe will, when we replace the pipe, we're gonna dig out the roots of some tree, trees that are budding it right against the bank of the Salmon Brook. The Conservation Commission did require or ask that we cut those trees at five feet high and try to leave the stumps in place. So, we agreed to do that. Once we cut the roots, we'll cut the trees, and so they don't hurt anybody. There'll be a couple other trees further back in the buffer that we're not gonna be able to salvage. They're right in a direct line of the trench. And we're not gonna be able to replace those for future maintenance purposes. We're gonna need access to this outlet. So, we're planning to come in and replace the whole area or restore the area with a, with an erosion grass seed. And, and that's pretty much the limit of our restoration. This project is not gonna provide any long-term traffic impacts, just during the impacts caused by, during construction. By sticking to the existing drain route and the existing drain outlet, we feel this is the least impactful route to resolve this situation, as opposed to going around it in some way, shape, or form. We really don't have room to go anywhere else here. They'll be too close to a house on either side. It would've been impactful to the residences at that point. As far as, I'll go through some of the other nine points here. We're not gonna be actually encroaching into the wetland, just in the buffer area. There is no significant impact in a habitat. We did file with NHD, NHDES about the northern long-eared bat, and there was none in this area. The best possible adequate erosion controls are being proposed. We're proposing non-invasive silt straw waddles along the edge of the bank. We're not gonna dig in any silt fence and therefore dig up more of the bank. We're just wanna protect what's there. And, yeah, hopefully you guys have any questions, I guess.
Mr. Lionel.
Hey, I'm looking at the, the letter from the Conservation Commission, and two of the stipulations, I have questions about the first one. It says, "Research and utilize less toxic pipe than the proposed PVC or HDPE."
Okay, yes. So, our original plan that we prepared for them was stated PVC pipe would be used. That's something that we do typically do in the city. We made the move to go to an HDPE, and actually, it's more and more of a, we're switching to a PE pipe, which is slightly different than HDPE. It's less, less subject to different chemicals, so it's not gonna break down as easily. There shouldn't be any chemicals going to the drain system, but we're still gonna go with the better pipe where we can. That's less toxic where we can. So, we did make that change to the set of plans that went out to bid about a week ago.
Okay. And, and you had mentioned that the trees are being cut to a five-foot height, and I'm seeing here, it says a twelve-foot snag height shall be maintained. Is there an inconsistency there? I'm confused.
Well, I, we agreed to a five-foot height. I'm willing to cut it to a twelve-foot height. I thought you were sure how to get manning equipment up there. So, it's...
I'm just reading what it says in the letter.
Twelve-foot snag height. I guess, I guess I'd have to define the twelve-foot snag height. The stumps are where I was, yeah.
I, I've seen this sort of thing from the Concom before, where they, they want trees not cut so short that if other trees fall, they get caught in something. I, I don't, not entirely sure, but it was just an inconsistency I, I picked up on, and I was wondering if you had any thoughts about it.
I think I should reach back up to the Conservation Commission. I apologize, I'm having a better answer than that. But we're willing to cut the trees off. I already wanted to limit all the, all the, all the trimming that we do, you know, to the adjacent trees. So, it's not a, not a question as far as, we're not willing to go along with them. It's just, I don't know how I would get manning equipment up there at twelve feet without a ladder on the edge of the brook, and it just sounds unsafe to me, to be honest with you.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll have to do some more homework. I apologize.
That's all I had.
Anybody else have any questions?
I think if we were to move forward with this application, unless we have something different in discussion, we'd be approving what they, what their stipulations are, and it would be up to the applicant to...
We don't have to follow...
We have the freedom.
We, we have the freedom to do whatever we want. We just, we have advice from the Concom, and it does sound to me like we're just, there's some confusion about this last point. And I'm willing to allow the city to work it out with the Concom as to what, what they're supposed to do.
We're probably getting into our deliberations, but perhaps it could be a not less than five, and that would give them the opportunity to discuss with the Conservation Commission.
That would be fine with me.
I, I just do have a question, just given that we have two cases back-to-back of Salmon Brook. Is there a relationship between the two cases that we've heard this evening?
Not, not necessarily. More, we've had trouble finding somebody to flag wetlands for us and do that kind of work, and then find, you know, actually move forward to projects against, if they're budding wetlands. You know, typically when TPW does a project, we generate an estimate, and then we go to bid for it. And any, if we were to flag wetlands, it comes out of a budget. And, you know, so we just, to be honest with you, we haven't done a lot of work in wetlands lately. So, we were using a guy, he went under the weather, and now he couldn't, wasn't able to do the work, so we kind of lost touch with our contact. We've, we've reestablished it now, and so we're aggressively pursuing these things. We feel like it's a good price for us, so we've flagged several locations across town now to kind of get moving on these sorts of things, because the town is not shy on drainage issues. One thing we do have is drainage problems, and we need, frankly, more outlets to the river. So, it's, it's a pretty big problem. We're fixing one that, we have an existing outlet. That's, it's a nice start. We have to go to NHDES to get some outlets approved, though, to really make some headway in some of these neighborhoods. And so, that's, it really just, really just came down to the timing of meeting somebody to do the work and then pushing the right buttons. And I've only been here five years. I know it sounds like a long time, but it just, you know, we aggressively push projects, and now we're, now we have the contacts, we're aggressively pushing more projects. That's what it comes down to.
So, it seemed to me, and I could be wrong, that the trigger in the last application was challenges that the homeowner was having that brought into the tension of the city. What's the trigger in this case?
Well, I don't wanna correct him or anything. The homeowner didn't say anything to us. We were investigating drainage issues, not drainage issues, but more sewer issues. The wastewater department complained about work that they have to always keep on doing on Spalding Street. And so, we started peeking around, and we noticed the catch basins in that area are not connected into the sewer, which is kind of unusual. But where do they go then? And we started looking, and from across the river, we saw the outlet pipe, and it came out of the, it comes out of a wall, and it goes under the water. And we're like, what, why does the pipe just go dive under the water? And so, it really came down to just, you know, putting the dots together and just realizing, you know, this looks like it goes under the house. And we eventually found the plan that says, yeah, it goes under the house. And they built the house on it, you know? And so, it was really kind of a, I can't believe this is happening, push the button, we gotta get out here and do something right away, sort of thing. Survey, flag the wetlands, all that stuff sort of happening. And we're probably a year late for getting here. I apologize. But we tried to get here sooner, and, you know, just things got slowed down. Our new wetlands contact wasn't as good as we thought, so we had to go onto somebody else. But still, though, it's working out good for us now. And, yeah, I apologize for not telling Earl the complete story, but it really was, we were looking to solve issues of the sewer pump station, looking to solve maintenance issues with wastewater, and just solid, you know, the only answer was there was a pipe going under a house. So, that's how we found it.
And so, my last semi-related question. So, I know the city's under MS four requirements. Are these improvements going to, you know, improve flow from, you know, the stormwater system from an MS four perspective, or it's unrelated?
No, there's nothing, no, no, probably unrelated, yeah. There's nothing, we're not disconnecting anything from the sewer system. We're just capturing water better and sending it off into the, into the river in a much more efficient way. You know, part of what we're gonna do is, there's some spots in this immediate area where the water just kind of runs over land and erodes away. The slopes and stuff, we're gonna try and capture that and improve some of the, the water quality, too, along the way. So, but it was nothing that was connected to sewer previously.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, pretty clearly, there's no one else here to speak one way or another. So, close the public hearing and open up the deliberations of the board. I should actually, I'm remiss in not noting that we did receive an email, so I will read that into the record. It is from Russ Kament of nine Meadowbrook Drive. And the comment is, "I hope this gets approved, because my yard and fetish basement had lots of water during a few rainstorms because of the sewers not being able to handle the volume of water coming down the road." Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. So, what is the pleasure of the board? Does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Neely.
Just to discuss it really quick. So, I, I take Harris Road all the time, so I drive over this all the time. And that whole area, you can tell, it's, it's very overgrown. So, so I understand, some work needs to get done down there. I've certainly seen the water level go up and down. So, I think it's a great plan to put this pipe in a, in a higher elevation. Driving around Meadowbrook, you can definitely see, I could definitely see there would definitely be some, some areas that need to be addressed on the drainage. I'm in favor of this whole thing. Once again, it's critical that we, we move some of these projects forward for the good of the whole neighborhood. We have a email from a gentleman at twelve Meadowbrook that he's getting flooded out. I, I think this whole thing's a no-brainer, just to move this along. I guess the only thing I really wanna talk about with the rest of the board is, we've started to talk about is that Concom letter. I think we need to move this whole project along. I'm not stuck on that fourth point. As Mr. Lionel was talking about, we've certainly, I think, once or twice we run into issues where, where things didn't match up, and we kind of, I don't wanna say overrode the Concom, but we don't have to do everything there. So, I'm certainly good with the, the first three bullet points. And, you know, if we say no, no lower than five, I think I know why they said twelve. But I can certainly sympathize if there's gonna be some safety issues getting in there. It's gonna get more expensive by doing that. So, I'm not stuck on that fourth bullet point, but I'd like to hear what some of the folks have to say.
Good point. Other thoughts? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm in support, you know, and I, I think, actually... Yeah, I'm in support of, you know, and I, I think actually just saying, you know, that greater, five footer greater, I'm fine with that, too. I think especially if some of the safety concerns are possibly dealing with a larger cut or higher cut.
Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Randall S. and Dennis S. Ellis, owners at, I'm sorry, Denise S. Ellis, owners, Matthew Franz, PE, City of Nashua, Senior Staff Engineer, the applicant, at 12 Meadowbrook Drive, Sheet B, Lot 221. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-115 to allow the repair slash replacement and upsizing of a municipal drainage system within the 75-foot prime wetland buffer of Salmon Brook. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 9. The, my motion is going to be to approve the special exception. The requested use is listed in the special exception use matrix as noted in the description I just read. The requested use will not create any undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety other than the minimal amounts during the actual construction period to take care of this, but it would just be temporary as noted. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer systems or any other municipal systems. And in fact, this is a case where it will improve the drainage systems and improve the overall ability to properly manage the water that is needing to drain from this local part of the neighborhood. And the design of the system is such that it should provide significant improvement and relief and will, I think, take care of that. The special regulations that are noted in the wetlands buffer will be followed. And there is guidance from the Conservation Commission with four stipulations. The board does, will accept those with a modification to the fourth one regarding the snag height of the trees, that there will be a minimum of five feet as there was potentially some uncertainty between the, the discussion from the ConCom originally and what's been published on the, on the note, as well as some safety concerns about trying to do a higher cut. And the, this use will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or the immediate neighborhood or be detrimental to the health morals or welfares of the residents of the city. In fact, overall, it should provide improvement in both of those regards. And for those reasons, again, I move to approve this special exception.
Do we have a second? Mr. Leno? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand. If it's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll be seeing a few more of those cases coming at us.
I, I have a strong feeling that's going to be the case. Okay, so moving on in the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to see the upcoming agenda?
Yes.
And does anybody see any projects of regional impact?
No.
No.
I saw none. And I figure we've had the minutes sent out to us separately via email. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes in the last meeting?
I did.
Any changes, corrections?
I had one.
Thank you.
Page seven, the paragraph about my comment, the, one, two, three, four, the seventh line towards the end where it says, "But it's a dispositive fact," it should, it should say, "But it's not a dispositive fact."
That's important?
Yeah. That's all I have.
Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion on the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes from...
Mr. Shaw, second. Second by Mr. Neely. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. And lastly, the bylaws. Those were also sent out to us. I think last time we had talked about some changes and corrections. I do, my read was that they were all captured. I don't know if anybody else has any different thoughts?
I concur. It looks like everything was caught.
I, I do note that it, it does appear, review the bylaws on our next agenda. I think we could make a move to approve them.
It's more by practice of, of, maybe Mr. Buck wants to jump in.
Usually there's supposed to be two successive meetings when, when they're all acceptable like this.
Okay.
So we have, we have a copy of them and then the chair, vice chair, and clerk will have to sign them. We need to keep a copy in our department and the city clerk's office also keeps a copy of it.
Okay.
So maybe if you want, we could do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's been our standard practice.
That's great. Is there anything else we need to discuss? Mr. Shaw?
Move to adjourn.
I assume that there'll be a second. We will all be in favor. Mr. Leno, second. All right, we are adjourned, 7:25.
Thank you.